All of you, I wanted to thank you, but I want to ask just one last question to everyone. A brief question with a brief answer. So what would you, to the Muslim youth of today, from the experience of the transformation, what we know of how the society transformed and Medina, starting with you, with Dr. Said Hussain Nasr, what would you say to the Muslim youth? How would you, in this world with a different current pressures and influences on the Muslim youth, what would be your advice, Dr. Hussain Nasr?
We're all concerned with our youth and they live in exceptionally difficult times. When on the one hand, you have really the solution, the solution of modernism which dominated over the world for so long, combined with the weakening of the traditions which resisted those modernistic trends, combined with the destruction of nature and the environment. The youth feel all of these much more than we do. A 10-year-old boy today is not even sure he's going to be alive when 60 years old, what the earth will be like, whether it'll be oxygen for him to breathe or not. In a very difficult existential situation. And the first thing that we can do for the youth is first of all, to give a positive appraisal of this very passing and brutal nature of the world. That the world is transient, that the spirit is real, to emphasize the spiritual aspect of the human being and of life, of confidence in God. It's on the one hand, very difficult now to draw the young to traditional religious norms. On the other hand, it's very easy. Because the world is so much more precarious and dangerous than it was generations of old. It's lost so much of its attraction. That's why so many young people are lost, even those who don't turn to religion, they have nowhere to turn to. And so a role, I think, should be most of all, to bring out the teachings of Islam in such a way that they're both authentic and pertinent today. I'm against all modernism, as you know. I'm a traditional Muslim. I've written 60 years against this, but I know the modern world. I've studied it, I know a little about it. We need to be able to present Islam as the rope that saves in the middle of the storm, but it's in authentic fashion. The passing fashions of the day that come and go, which so many young people are infatuated with, they're not going to solve anything. So we have two lessons to teach. On the one hand, to show what really the nature of the fads of today are that attract the youth, how passing they are, how insidious they are for the health of our souls and that of our children. And on the other hand, the ever-abiding reality of Islam, which has always been there and for which the Prophet serves as the perfect model. In the second issue, we have a problem because a lot of people are speaking the name of Islam without really practicing the virtues of Muslims, without really being Islamic. It's much worse than Marxism in a certain sense, which attacks religion. It's much better to attack religion than to try to emulate it as a caricature, making use of its name and its fame and its importance by distorting it. But believe in such a world. We need more than talk. We need a reality of existence. We need people who can act as examples. From sportsmen to intellectuals, from writers to inventors. In every domain, we need people as models or devout Muslims or dedicated really to the teachings of the Islam and the Prophet, who at the same time love their society, love the fellow men, women and the rest of nature, who at the same time concerned with what concerns the young. I keep coming back to this world of nature. I'm the first person to have written about the environmental crisis long before Lynn White or anybody else in the 1960s. And Dr. Bakar here worked with this on this issue. He's the first in the world to have done that. This issue is the key to the life of the young. Because if it's not going to be the future, why do all this talking? We need to have this idea of Tawakkul al-Allah, that God takes care of his creation and we are the Khalifah al-Allah al-Arthu, given by God the duty to protect and to care for creation. How many of you know families living in the West where a 10-year-old knows more about nature than his 50-year-old father and criticizes his father and mother for being indifferent? This is the day in which we live. We have a very, very rich traditional Islamic world and many young Muslims can be brought back to the other aspects of Islam, which Alhamdulillah is still alive, as some of the speakers pointed out, by showing them that Islam contains solutions to the most urgent problems of our day. Which they do not think are the question of Rabah and things like that. The thing is the question of the air they're going to breathe in a few years, the water they're going to drink and every practical thing of this kind. So we have a tremendous resource to draw from, but at the same time tremendous responsibility to draw from it. Your Excellency, I know you, this is also the subject of your concern in Pakistan. Because I've read some things you've written and said here and there, unfortunately not all. But a country like Pakistan, which is like my own country, if it doesn't pay attention to such issues, the next generation is not going to be able to live. Same with Iran, my own country, or any other country. I'm not trying to point Pakistan as the only country. And we are the heirs to civilization, which was always based on harmony with God, harmony with the world, harmony with heaven, harmony with earth. In which all of Islamic city planning, architecture, everything, and both had a religious character and was sanely balanced environmentally. What have you done with it? We have to revive this and we have to revive this on the basis of faith. And if we present these things to the young, they'll listen to it. About 60 years I've experienced a teacher in my own country, Iran and the West and other Islamic countries. And I know that once you talk about matters in this way, that's contemporary and understandable, a lot of people will listen. People are not interested in fine points of law, which the Taliban and Cairo had to learn if you learned Fath, centuries ago. That's sacred and very important. That should be there. But we need actually to bring out these issues. And Your Excellency, I don't want to just to talk about Pakistan, but you're one of the very few Muslim leaders who is aware of these issues. Why don't you make Pakistan a place where meetings such as this take place regularly? Where leaders even of young people who are interested in these things are brought to discuss these issues? And it will spread. There's no other place in the Islamic world which doesn't. No place. And Insha Allah, gradually this awareness will increase. As some of our speakers have said, the solution is not an immediate 24-hour engineering solution. It will take longer time. And I'll repeat and I will end with this. The fact that a same prime minister of a country who's usually, like every other country, concerned with what's going to happen tomorrow is now also concerned with what's going to happen after tomorrow is a very good sign. That's a very, very good sign and let's follow it, Insha Allah.
Dr. Hamza Yusuf, you know, I want your comments just on this. The problems I'm having in Pakistan, and I'm sure this is a problem in most of the Muslim world, that there are two sorts of crimes in the society. One is corruption and the other is sex crime. We find that sex crime has risen very sharply in our society, which means rape as well as child abuse. And unfortunately, only 1% of sex crime is reported. So which means law enforcement can basically just deal with 1%. The other 99%, I feel the society has to fight it. Same with corruption. You can, you know, maybe deal with corruption at a certain level. But then when government officials keep taking money bribes at a low level, I feel that it is again, a society has to make corruption unacceptable. And unfortunately, when you have leadership which is corrupt over a period of time, they make corruption acceptable. So this is not just a problem in Pakistan. It's probably in most of the Muslim world, as well as the developing world. So Sheikh Hamza Yusuf, your views?
I think both problems, they're profound problems that have to do with appetite. The shahwa is a fundamental thing in the human being, that God has put appetites in us for good reasons, for healthy reasons. But these appetites become perverted. And so the desire for wealth is a natural desire because we need wealth. But when that desire becomes inordinate, when it becomes something that is greedy and then we begin to harm the society, something's gone seriously wrong. So this is a deep problem in many, many places, including the United States. There's no country that exempts, but it's the degree with which the corruption, like an apple, if you have a small piece of corruption, you can remove it and it's still a good apple. But as it increases throughout the fruit, at a certain point, you just throw the apple away. So this is a huge problem and I know you're addressing this. But one of the things that people have to understand about this is that the selfishness of that individual is, in the end, harms himself. Inna ma baghiyikum al-anfusikum. The Quran says, "Your corruption is against yourselves. It harms yourselves." This inordinate desire. In terms of the sexual problem, this has to do with a loss of chivalry, a loss of futuwa, a loss of the qualities that decent men have. It's very important for men to understand that they are that we are, God has given us and tasked us with the care of women and children. If you look at society, if you just walk around, everything you see almost without exception was built by men. Men built the roads, they built the houses, they put the plumbing, the infrastructure. Why did they do this? They did this for women and children. This is the fundamental impulse in men. And so we have to inculcate in our young men especially, this idea of honoring women. The Prophet SAW said, "La yukurumahunna illa kareem." Only noble people honor women. "Wala yuhinahunna illa laim." And only contemptible people will dishonor women or degrade women. So it's very important that the women in the culture, the mothers, they raise their sons with that sensibility. But also the fathers have to be exemplars in this. It's very important, but this is a huge problem. And I think the fact that you're speaking about these things because often in our cultures, because we have shame-based cultures, often these things are not spoken about. But just the fact that you're bringing this to the forefront is very important because it will empower people. But also, we have to follow the Sunnah of the Prophet. There's a lot of, in the modern world, a lot of women have, they feel like they don't need this idea of the mahram, they don't need this idea of the guardianship. Our tradition protects women. And if it doesn't, it means our tradition is not present. So it's really important for the women to understand that there are reasons why the Prophet SAW emphasized these things, like the mahram, of not going to places where you shouldn't be. That onus is obviously first and foremost on the men. And we can't blame the victims. And that would be completely unjust and wrong. But at the same time, women need to understand that there are wolves out there and those wolves are real. And so it becomes a matter of the man taking upon themselves the protection, the guardianship of the women, especially the young women and the children. I mean, these are some of the greatest crimes against people.
Dr. Abdul Hakim Murad, the same question, but you know, the problem which we are facing is that because of the mobile phone, the sort of information available on the mobile phone for young people, for children, is unprecedented in history. I mean, there's positive information and of course, there is there's a pornographic material which is available. And I feel that one of the reasons why we are suddenly having sex crimes and not just women, I mean, I'm talking about children. So I feel that this is something which I think most societies are grappling with right now. So your views, Dr. Murad?
Recently, the school that I attended 40 years ago, which during my period as a schoolboy, accepted girls for the first time. And during my five years there, I never saw or heard of any kind of impropriety or outraging of the girls, who were always treated with sort of respect. The traditional English gentleman, you know, opened doors and respectful for women and respected their public inviolability. Last year, the girls' school went public with an outrageous story about how there were hundreds and possibly thousands of cases of harassment, exposure, teasing, outraging of various kinds. And this has become part of our culture wars now, unfortunately, because the liberals don't want to censor anything. But everybody knows that the key trigger has, as Your Excellency has pointed out, the availability even to young children of high-resolution images of things that in the nature of things should be private and not made part of public entertainment. And particularly the adolescent mind, if it grows up recurrently addicted to such images. The neuroscientists have pointed out that this results in permanent damage. And so it's part of the global crisis at the moment. And the internet is something that is one of those globalizing phenomena that isn't really subject to the control of the nation-state. Increasingly, the nation-state is less powerful than it used to be. Something like Bitcoin, something like the internet, something like climate change. Many of the big issues today are things that have to be resolved globally rather than by individual states. How one deals with that? Well, we find again, those individuals who come to Islam in England, who I work with, most of them are women. Many of them find their hijab, the traditional restraint, the understanding of strict boundaries between men and women, a kind of liberation. They don't like being in the law of the jungle and the world of vulnerability, abuse, sex crime, harassment, online dating. They want something that is more reasonable. So again, there is a catastrophe out there, but it's not the religions that have produced the catastrophe. It's another epiphenomenon of modernity. So to resort to your question to Said Hussain Nasr, in order to attract the young people, we have to not just answer all of the questions that are coming from their modernity, but to point out that the crisis of modernity is ever continuing, ever escalating. Climate change is one aspect. Catastrophe, overviews of gender and appropriate behavior between the genders. The Me Too movement in America is huge globally, not just in the Muslim world. To see Islam with its very balanced ideas of gender, sexuality, appropriate relationship, hijab, as actually an amazing solution and a solution that many young people who are joining Islam now have found to be a solution, as being a very good way of holding their attention, treating Islam not just as a heritage of old-fashioned things that need somehow to be justified, but rather as a divinely authored medicine chest of remedies for the ever-spiraling catastrophes of out-of-control secular world.
Dr. Rajab Shantru, can you please just explain to us the sort of problems? Are these the sort of problems you're having in Turkey?
Yes, Your Excellency, these are global problems, you know, we face everywhere. Not only in the UK or America or Pakistan or in Turkey, everywhere. Because we are living under the influence of what they call globalization. And during this period, what I advise to our youth is to adopt the ethics of futuwa, which means youth ethics derived from the Sunnah of Prophet Muhammad alaihissalam. And it was codified in manuals for the youth. They received it and they put it in practice. So today, this is what's missing. Although the concept of futuwa was commonly shared in all Muslim societies, in Pakistan, in Persia, in Turkey, in the Arab world, everywhere. So this is what's missing today. And today, we are under the threat of postmodern liberal, individual, subjective, relativist, post-truth ethics. And our youth is under the threat of extravagant consumption. You know, the advertisement from all directions. In addition to the problems, Professor Nasr and Sheikh Abdul Hakim Murad mentioned, I believe the most important threat today is this postmodern worldview and the postmodern ethics. And the only way our youth can resist to this very powerful trend is adopting the futuwa ethics, which was derived from the Sunnah. So this requires a strategy of rooted revival. You know, of course, we can't replicate the past as it is, but we need to preserve our roots and adopt a revivalist approach. Our youth should not be reactionary nor apologetic. You know, but with self-confidence, recovering the memory of the past, feeling proud with our civilization, with our religion, with our history. And they should work for intellectual independence from the hegemony of this postmodern culture today. And our education should educate our youth to gain intellectual independence from this hegemonic culture and from globalization, to think, think for themselves, following the Sunnah of Prophet Muhammad. But at the same time, our youth should ask the following question, "What I can do for the world?" So we should work for the solution of the world problems, not only for the problems of Muslims. This is the concept of Rahmat al-Alameen. You know, we should be rahma for the Africans, for the Latin Americans, for the Russians, the Chinese, the Indian, you know, for every one in the world, regardless of their religion, regardless of their color, regardless of their race and citizenship. And this is what the futuwa ethics teaches us, you know, to reflect the qualities of Prophet Muhammad, who was the Rahmat al-Alameen. And the most important Sunnah is to be Rahmat al-Alameen.
Dr. Chandra, your views of what you see in Malaysia, youth in Malaysia, and what you can tell us about that?
If I may, perhaps reflect upon what has been said and try to draw the essence of our discussion and put it in a particular context. And what is that context? It would be a very good idea, Your Excellency, one got youths themselves to speak of. In other words, the next meeting should not be a meeting dominated by those of us who are in our 60s and 70s. You know, perhaps getting young people who are in their 20s and 30s to come together. You saw the energy of young people participating in the climate change conference in Scotland. What they had to say, of course, a lot of it was perhaps condemnatory. They were angry and rightly so, but they had some very good points. I think if we could bring them together, Your Excellency, to do three things. Number one, to articulate their position on what they think is wrong with the world and why they think we need some urgent solutions. If you could get them to articulate their positions. We talk about sex crimes, about corruption and so on. Do they also see these as the real challenges? Perhaps they do, I suspect they do. But maybe there are other dimensions that they aware of, which we are not aware of. So number one, that would be a major challenge. Number two, I think this idea of Ramadul al-Alemin and the relationship to young people. Why do they see our own traditions, our value systems, the principles which are embodied in our great philosophy core truths? Why do they see that as the Ramadul al-Alemin? Do they? Perhaps they see this as my goal. I've talked to young people, Your Excellency, and sometimes feel that they have a clear idea of the dignity of human beings. And they can relate their dignity to spiritual values, to moral standards. It'd be nice to hear them take that position, that this is the blessing for the whole of humankind. If we can get them to address that, that'll be the second major challenge. And the third, an area where we have failed. Generations of people with strong spiritual positions have somehow failed to show that this spiritual inheritance is a shared inheritance. It is not exclusive to any of us. It's not exclusive to Muslims, for instance. And many of the great truths, for instance, about the climate crisis, it's shared by all the great traditions. I'm glad that Professor Hussain Nasr made a reference to his own book about this. It was one of the earliest books that dealt with this challenge from a spiritual angle, from a multi-spiritual angle. And I think that is what people should be talking about. I asked some friends who attended the meeting in Scotland whether there were young people who made any reference to that book. Because it is a book that had an impact on me as a young person decades ago. But they hadn't. And yet it's such a pity, because it is a book that unites people on this fundamental question of the crisis facing humankind today from a spiritual perspective, a shared spiritual perspective. So I think it'd be good if we could bring young people together to cross cultures, to cross boundaries and take a shared position. Unfortunately, not many friends, sapphires and other faiths see Islam as having that sort of position. And yet, that is so much a part of Islam. It is a part of Islam even before the Prophet preached his central mission to humankind. He brought people of different traditions together, Hidr, Quzo, as a way of showing that there was a common bond that held them together. And I think this is what we have to do again. In this moment, at this time in history, we have to show that if you look at the climate crisis, you look at the nuclear crisis, if you look at the COVID crisis, every crisis, it manifests itself in a multi-dimensional way. It affects all human beings. These are shared challenges, shared burdens. And we have to bring out a shared message. Islam did it so beautifully centuries ago. We have to do it again. Thank you.
Dr. Aswan Bakar, just what I wanted to ask you was, your views specifically in what you think about the Malaysian youth? How do you see it transforming? What would you recommend to them? And of course, Muslims all over, but specifically I mean Malaysia.
Your Excellency, I think that to complement what Dr. Chandra has mentioned, in sense, yes, told us a very important aspect of the youth in Malaysia. But I find that mainly through students in universities and colleges, there is a very interesting development, which is encouraging. In sense that they feel that they need to know their region from a different approach. And certainly, they talk about a kind of marginalized Islam. In other words, the Islam that is being pursued as being maintained by the old generation is not the kind that they are really fond of, they're interested. But it doesn't mean that they lack the spirit, they lack the inspiration to, for example, to know our spiritual tradition, our intellectual tradition. And this is an area where I personally have been engaged for. And it's an area where I personally have been engaged for, for a long time. In other words, that they feel that this is what they did more. In other words, with due respect, the whole generation whose commitment to religion, you know, has contributed many things. But they feel that, that perhaps something about religion, especially in Malaysia, being a multi-religious country, a very pluralistic society, more than 40% of the population are Muslims. So the, for example, I would encourage them for dialogue. Because I really feel, and I remember that Chandra has been with me before, in both inter-religious dialogue or intercultural dialogue. The idea is that for the future, it's very, very important for Malaysia that if you want to bring about stability and a good future for the country, we must have interfaith harmony. And that is something new, which the old generation is indifferent to it, but the younger generation, I find that more and more of them are coming out, they want to know more what Islam has got to say about interfaith, inter-religious relationship. And of course, I think in, in the case of Malaysia, because the, when we talk about intra-Islamic relations, it's quite different from Pakistan because we belong at the same school of thought and domination. So the problem is less, but, but still we have to deal with the question of intra-Islamic unity. The contest now is between the traditional sector and the modern educated, but who has to turn to Islam? So I think the, well, there are both, like I say, two parallel developments. One, the kind of development, of course, the, the impact, the negative impact of modernization of new forms of modernity on, on, on the young. But on the other hand, the same facilities, the cyber space, for example, have been used by another group of the young people for the larger, for, for the benefit of the religion and, and, and society. Thank you.
Sheikh Abdullah, can you please just answer, not answer, but just give a message for the youth, the, the young people who are listening to you? I just want you to give them a message. How, what would you advise them, given the contemporary influences on them, all the issues caused by social media, inundation of knowledge, which never was available to children, to young people at this age? So what would you advise the young people?
Shukran, my Ali, Raisheer Muzraa, Ashkuroh. Wadidna Qula Inna Nahu la na, ya tkelbna ala shabab di dola wa ha de Nukun qad zalbnaa, li anna shabab ala na muta astir Kul bil gaulma, nahu nagishu, gaulma aqlaqiya Wa kama qala Ali, Raisheer Muzraa Al tussiya meja, halina Wasaa, wasaa, intsaad Haya tukthi khaera shabab Wali azeezika Ana araa, anna kalla ta sakina, lati badna baha Hua li anzaa ta sakina, fi qulub mina Kalla ta sakina, hii kalla mohma jada Bana sakina Hii pala tatazzal ala anfusi Wata thiru laa malaa Hala wada Annan napaan haaleh sakina Kaita tatazzal fi qulub shabab Resala fi shabab Hua sakina Hua aqlaq saakina Aqlaq saakina, hii aqlaq Tisha fia amfaal Li amfaal fia laa tukthi Bani fariyku, lina tijja lil aqal Wil diin Wali saa natija lil qad Wala natija lil ananiya Fa sakina, hii lati ansho bha shabab Lakni ansho bishay aha Hua Ri mukhi ri aasati Fi beladi aawiin madr baksta An tukun haka jamga li aqlaq Edra jamga li handasa Limada laa tukun fi jamga li handasa aqlaq Anfusi Li tukdi mi Dali la aqlaq Gaid Li aqlaq La wada min shayin mina fersafa Washayin mina tsaad Limada fersafa aqba, li set ba rafa khaera Ala mussoo shabab Limada tagliim, li sa jidda Hadi kuwa masaiw azthi La wada min tagliim La wada mina mazal La wada an yataalma Bahu shabab, hatta yoku na qudo ta di shabab Tagliimu bil naghir Fa hadi hii masai, lati ahtamu bha Jamga li handasa li buu Hii jamga li aqlaq Fersafa, tsaad Sakina, hii natija Dali li aqlaq Gaalma, ala na, hii aadru laa wada laa Hala wada an nataalma bha Li shayin mina fikri Washayin mina aqlaq, naba wadiati Lati hii, lakiqa tsaad Tsahil Wal fersafa, tsadiqa Hii kuwa tsaad Ji aqlaq, naba wadiati Shal Wa ashkuroh Haqamta hu, wa hayi, wa wahi
Respected scholars, thank you for your enlightening views. I will again, would like maybe once a month or once in two months, ask you for a meeting where we can talk about contemporary issues that are very important for the Muslim world, to hear the views of, of scholars like you. And my whole idea of forming this Ramatul A'lamin Authority, the idea is that we, we, through the seerah of our Prophet, we unite human beings. And secondly, we raise the moral and ethical standards of our society. Just like in the, in the state of Madinah, our Prophet did almost 1,500 years ago. Thank you very much.